Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening. It's a little loud. We'll call this twentieth regular session of Mayor and City Council's order. The invocation will be given by Councilmember Elshire and we'll have to pledge the flag if you please stand and join us.
Accept our thanks for this day and all its blessings. We ask that you guide and direct our actions, grant that each of us may feel our responsibility to our community, and bless our fellowship today in service. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the Father, to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some quick announcements. We'll be following the rules procedure that are adopted by this administration on December 20th of 2016. If you have a cellphone, electronic device, please mute it. Our correspondence or distribution elected official should be provided to the city clerk. You should get a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. There is no meeting on August 1st. August the 8th, 15th, and 22nd are work sessions at 4:00 PM and August 29th is a regular session at 7:00 PM. We have some appointments this evening. We have one, two to the Hagerstown Housing Authority. Howard Jean Bowers, term to expire on August 30th, 2020. And Rosalyn Martin, term to expire on August 30th, 2022. Get a motion, please.
Mayor, have I moved for appointments of Howard Jean Bowers for the Hagerstown Housing Authority? Appointment to expire and for Rosalyn Martin for the same authority for their term to expire. Mr. Bowers on August 30, 2020, and Ms. Martin on August 30, 2022.
Second time, Mayor.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Historic District Commission, Leslie Allen, term to expire on August 27th of 2020. Get a motion.
Mr. Mayor, have I moved for appointment of Leslie Allen to the historic district commission term to expire August 27, 2020?
Second time as well.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. And on the City Ethics Commission, Rabbi Ariel Plosk, term to expire September 1st, 2022.
Mayor, have I moved for the appointment of Rabbi Ariel Plosk to the City Ethics Commission, term to expire September 1, 2022?
One second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Citizen comments, please. All right, Mr. Lor, you're up first.
Marvin Lor, 1135 Sunnyside Drive. How are we doing on our trash?
I think things are looking up, Marvin.
What has been accomplished or done yet?
Well, we'll tell you that the bids just went out. Rodney Tissue, City Engineer, just sent out the bids for the new contract that we're looking at, which includes other ways of collecting trash and some things like that. We should have them back probably end of August, I would think. Kind of timeframe.
I believe so, and then back to you.
Right, right, so the, and the contract would begin January 1.
Okay, well, I came tonight because I can't get a meeting with anybody about temporary sales tax exemption for the downtown area. Now, I talked to three cabinet members of the governor, two senators, one House representative, and a number of shop owners in this downtown area. I've only had one negative comment about it. So I think it's something to look into, and I think the city of Hagerstown needs to take another long and hard look at itself. The millions poured into the state-funded projects have had little effect on downtown. The projects like the trail, the art building, art on the buildings, the art gallery. It's like trying to put icing on a cake that hasn't been baked yet. To incre- if you had temporary sales tax, you would have, you'd increase employment. You would increase your parking fees. You would increase jobs. You would increase the income tax. You could increase the sales tax outside of the district. Your real estate tax would go up after two to three years. And business outside the district would also gain, like from restaurants, gas stations, and other stores that would pick up the traffic coming into town. I propose a three-by-four block area. Locust Street on the east, Baltimore Street on the south, Prospect Street on the west, Church and East Street on the north. The extra parking fees you could get by taking the 50 cents an hour you have now, up at the 50 cents, or up to 75 cents, and charge on Saturdays. You could give that money to the state to keep them from worrying about losing a little bit of sales tax they're getting now from this district.
Okay, I'm listening.
Pardon me, you're listening? I could go over some more things too, but I was trying to get you guys to think and do something. If this is not a good idea, I think somebody has to start really thinking hard because all these little towns have an art district or some little gimmick like going, but all we have down here is a lot of empty buildings and a few restaurants that come and go.
You know we do have an arts entertainment district, right?
Well, I know you do.
Okay.
But you need something else to support it.
We understand that.
And I had three restaurants in Frederick, and I, I would never have come up here for a restaurant. I wouldn't, not in the downtown area anyway. You have, your mall is having rough times down there, and your, the outlets may be having a hard time because of the new outlet stores they put in Clarksville on Route 70, because that'll pull the most of your people from the Washington Frederick area, I believe. So gotta take a good, hard look and come up. If this isn't an idea, then let's look at something. You gotta, you gotta have something bold, and you gotta do it. You've been 47 years this downtown has been dying or dead, and it's time to turn it around. And I'll be back next month.
Thank you, Marvin. Jimmy?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name's James Devine, Post Office Box 2217, Hagerstown, Maryland. The first thing I come to talk to you about is the parking for vets downtown. On Locust Street and Washington Street down here where the Amets are closing down here, the vets pick up, or vet van picks up veterans on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And I called the parking department and asked them if they would provide a space or two for veterans if they needed to park a vehicle there to go down to the VA hospital in Martinsburg. And, and if they go down there, they're only down there for maybe a half a day. And he, he gave me the reasoning that if he did it for the veterans, he would do it for everybody. And I don't think that's a good excuse because I'm asking for the veterans. I'm not asking for everybody. And if, if you could see that this tag here, if there's a copy of this tag or this tag is in a vehicle down there, if you would be able to permit at least two parking spaces on that very corner where the handicap spaces are, that would allow veterans to be able to park there. If you would inform your parking division that they, if they see this in a windshield, that they would not ticket the vehicle for that day, I'd appreciate it. It'd be for the veterans.
You want to leave a copy?
Well, I did. I left a copy with the. And then the, the next issue I wanted to talk about was the speed cameras. I have, I have the Article Transportation Code 21806. It talks about the speed cameras. I see that the ordinance was establishing the school zone, although I didn't see the mayor's signature on it. It says, "Mayor did not sign." I guess you did not approve of the speed cameras at that time?
I did not.
You still approve of them?
I don't approve the hours of operation.
Well, they're, they're for the safety of the children, aren't they?
Which is why I don't approve of the hours of operation.
Oh, the hours of operation?
Yes.
The, the hours of operation are just through the weekdays. Now, the code says it's just through the weekdays during certain hours.
Between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM.
Yeah, right, right. And, and, and those, those are the hours when, when the school children would be at the school for, for extra activities or things. And also, there, there needs to be one place back on the Sharpsburg Pike, back behind South Pike, Hagerstown High. I mean, I see people coming down there doing 50, 60 miles an hour. When school lets out, the kids aren't going to walk up to the corner and go, they're going to go straight across to the, to the shopping center. That's the way they walk, you know? But, but there needs to be a speed camera up in there, you know, to slow people down in that school zone. And, and there's not. And, and this provision, these articles, and I gave a copy to the clerk, they, they provide a path that the city council can have a speed camera there. And also out, out at the Votech Center. Even though it's called a state road, there's a process that the city can go through to get a speed camera put up at the Votech Center out there, you know, to slow people down. And a lot of, a lot of the students are driving out there, pulling out on the road and things. But, you know, the, and, and I think there should be a reevaluation since it's summer before school lets in on where the speed cameras should be around, you know, where they're located at. Even like South Potomac Street. I was wrong when I said something about North, North High because there are speed cameras on both sides of the street. But down where Besters, there's only a speed camera on one side of the street. So therefore, it's only catching people on South Potomac Street speeding one way and not, not the other way. So if, if maybe, if maybe the, that could be reviewed before school gets back in. And, and also, I was thinking about the speed camera boxes. If there's a high crime area, why aren't there cameras put in those boxes to record people in those areas instead of recording people speeding, you know? It, it, I think it would be a device that would help cut down the crime areas. At least, at least you have identification that would record people in that area during that period of time and be able to identify people that are committing crimes. It would be like a disguised box, but if it says speed camera, it'd be recording the, the people in the area. And then, of course, I'm going to rant and rave about the administration. This, this president is a pathological liar, dangerous, intolerant Russian puppet, not qualified to be a leader of this nation. He praises Saudi Arabia and Muslim cultures that carry a concept of women being inferior. Women are allowed to drive, work, wear a skirt. He embraces Sharia law. He wants to institute a Christian evangelical Sharia law in his nation. He goes to Poland and emboldens a government which is mythology, mythologically turning into a dictatorship. This dictatorship is dismissing its constitution, its courts, its military leadership, news media, and, and politicizing its civil service. And that's what this president wants to do in this nation. He institutes a Muslim ban which makes terrorism worse for this nation and the world. Now they say they hate us. He insults the Latino population with no facts or evidence. He degrades the Environmental Protection Agency, denies climate change, degrades consumer protection laws, degrades the courts, the news medias, and puts a religious zealot in the Supreme Court. He did not drain the swamp, but brought in the swamp of lobbyists and a millionaire club, of cabinet appointees who know nothing of the life struggle of the everyday people. He has disregarded the values and morals of this nation to this world. He has Steve Bannon, a white supremacist, whispering in his ear, a puppet master pulling his strings. He supports a healthcare bill which millions of Americans would die for lack of healthcare, which he said he would not do. The president still thinks he's running a reality show, that he can vouch people for no cause or reason. His administration is doing involuntary reassignment of government employees, scientists, scholars. Now they're being transferred to pig farm employment. He is tearing this government apart. He is not appointing people of expertise or knowledge to run this country, but people who are demanding, he, people that he is demanding loyalty to the king. He is closing the doors to the knowledge of how this government is being run. His son, son-in-law, campaign manager, colluded with the Russians to throw this election. The president said he did not know about it, but was encouraging the Russians to interfere. He's a pathological liar. He knew about it. He and his family committed high crimes and treason against this nation and democratic governments, and all should be hung because of it. No one is above the law to suggest that the most powerful people in our nation should escape liability when they violate clearly established laws.
You about done, Jimmy?
Pardon me?
You about done?
No.
Well, you, yeah, your time's up.
Okay, can I just continue just on this little part here?
We'll give you 30 more seconds.
Okay. Defies the most fundamental principle of our legal system and society. The NRA is right in that independents and liberals, people of this nation, have to take up arms to defend the fundamental principle of what this nation stands for. This is a war of freedom and democracy. This nation needs more martyrs to commit, sacrifice their life to neutralize the Republicans, conservatives.
Ah, Jimmy, Jimmy, Jimmy. Thank you.
I didn't go five minutes, did I?
Yeah, you did.
You sure?
Oh, I know you did. Yeah, you spent three minutes before you started reading.
Oh, that's true. That's, I'm sorry, you did. Well, I guess I have to come back next month.
Okay, buddy. Thank you, Jimmy.
To be continued.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joseph?
Question, Mary.
There you go. Sorry, I'm.
Mayor Bruci in council. I've, from, I'm from Faith Chapel here downtown. I've been a part of this city for 57 years. I've pastored three churches here in town and been a part of two others that were very active here in the town. And I, I didn't come to rant and rave. I came to encourage you all. That was my, that's my purpose for being here tonight. I have been a part of many citywide programs that have, you know, the Four State Crusade, Here's Life, Washington County, and worked, taught at MCI and MCTC and a number of different programs around here. And for 10 years, in the 70s and 80s, we had a prayer meeting every Wednesday. And one of the main things that we prayed for was our city, our leaders, our mayor, and the county commissioners that we had. And then for another five years or so, I was part of another prayer group that met at Zion Baptist Church. And we, again, one of our major topics of discussion was our city and our leadership because we are very concerned about our leadership in our churches. And I believe that the prayers that we have been praying are beginning to be answered. And what prompted me especially to come tonight was that an event happened on June 20th of this year that I think you all ought to know about. A group of ladies, about 22 ladies, came on a bus and they were a part of Everything Changes Prayer Tour. And they came to Hagerstown at 8:45 of June 20th to walk and pray on the streets of our city, for the city. And that was one of a number of cities that day, Martinsburg, Winchester, Charlottesville, that they went and visited and prayed for. Before they got off the bus, they prayed, "God, visit this city. Intervene in this city. This city needs you, Lord. Change the course of this city." And now here's what they, here's a report of what they said that day. "Heroin and opiate abuse and overdose, drug addiction, crime and racial tension with police, homelessness and joblessness." These were some of the answers from our local pastors in Hagerstown when we asked, "What are the greatest challenges in your city?" With their help, we mapped out a portion of the city and started a walking tour downtown. We circled the center of Hagerstown District where scattered across the cityscape were artistic sculptures of butterflies. We walked past the cultural government and social service center of the city and began to pray for Hagerstown families, for the next generation, for wisdom and blessing on government leaders, for the police, for entertainment, education, economic sectors of culture, and for joblessness and poverty that plagues this city. We prayed with pro, both pro-abortion and pro-life advocates who were on the streets that day. We prayed over Jonathan and Prospect Streets, known as drug abuse and prostitution. When we got back on the bus, the women began to write in their journals what God was saying to them about their experience in Hagerstown. Later that day, they shared with one another. God was speaking one word, and that one word was repeatedly, "Hope." H is for Hagerstown. H is for hope. "I have come to give Hagerstown a hope and a future for the next generation. A caterpillar endures great pain trying to break out of a cocoon. This city's in great pain right now, but soon there will be freedom as this city is transformed. There's going to be a metamorphosis in Hagerstown, a transition of hope. Hagerstown will become a city of hope." When the women were asked, "How many of you wrote down the word 'hope'?" All 22 of them said, "Hope." And so tonight, I'm, I'm here just to give a word of encouragement that the pastoral community, like I said, I've been a part of five churches and two prayer groups. The pastors of this city are praying for you, for wisdom, for discernment, for decisions that you make. And we've been trying to make a difference. So Convoy Hope has been here five times, and that was a city-church combination event. We have been praying, helping the poor and working with homeless together with you. And we're trying to make a difference as citizens. And so we are calling for God to do something great in this city. And this may sound a little strange, but one of my prayers the last couple of years is, "May Hagerstown become a Jesus city where His name is spoken in honor more than any other." And I really thank you all for giving me an opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's the last individual that's signed up to speak. If anybody else wishes to speak.
Mr. Mayor, could I just make a small comment? I would appreciate that you would give as many times as previous speaker as you just had because of the point I'm making.
Jimmy, actually, you've got more time than what he got.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody who wishes to speak, step up to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jason Physioc. I don't have a permanent address right now, but I'm a Hagersturnian all the way, north, south, east, and west. I just want to give a suggestion, a safety suggestion for the bike lanes. Some of the bike lanes have like debris and chunks of rock and, and stuff that, that can be dangerous. And I just suggest that you sweep them once in a while. And maybe even, I mean, some of them are really bad on, on North Prospect Street and headed up towards Pennsylvania Avenue. There's like a section through there that's really bad. And it's, and some of it's around turns where trucks are coming around the turns and stuff. And if somebody is having trouble, that, you know, that could be a big issue. And some, I, I mean, I don't know if a street sweeper could do it. I mean, some, some of these areas have like chunks of rock everywhere. So you might have to get like a skid loader with a sweeping thing on it or whatever. But, but yeah, that was, that was my only suggestion.
Well, thank you.
And, and I, and I also, well, as I was listening to somebody else talk about the arts entertainment district and stuff, I really appreciate the, the path. And I've seen, I've seen that, that path that goes, you know, from downtown to like the city park or whatever. I've seen some visitors coming by and admiring, you know, and I think it's a good thing. And I, I do have one more, one more thing that I'd like to throw out there. This might sound silly, but um, to increase the, the arts entertainment district, I got this crazy idea of starting a tropical parrot breeding facility and training facility downtown. If anybody could help me get that along the way, that would be awesome. My email is jasonphysioc@gmail.com. It's all lowercase, P-H-Y-S-I-R-C.
Thank you, Jason. Anybody else?
Hey, good evening, sir. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Vishal Metta, and I own the Jerry's Sports Bar at Public Square. I, it's been now three months, sir, and I just wanted to thank the city first for all that has been done. A lot of council members sitting here have been very supportive. While I haven't seen you there as yet, but.
I know.
Yes, I, I need to see that support also coming forward. I just have a small grouse, sir. While I know the city has huge plans for making the downtown a much better place than what it is right now. But I, I, as a business owner today, I see that a lot of these city events that are being planned and things like that, they're just being focused at one corner of, it may be convenient for the city or, I don't know. I really don't know if the administration thinks in that manner. But people like us who've invested, I've invested with a friend of mine, almost a million and a half in doing that place up and buying those buildings there. It just cuts us short because all the events with the barricades and things like that, it, it creates huge chaos for, for us. Instead of increasing the business, it just kills the business for us. While it's a good thing to have the city events, but I think there are lots of restaurants which are, which are in and around that place. So instead of focusing on just one corner of a road and focusing on two restaurants or three restaurants, I think, in that lane, let the others also benefit out of this, you know? It's, it's a sincere, humble request. And I, I really don't know what can be done and what should be done for it. I don't have any suggestions. But this is one point. The second point is that people like us, somebody spoke of hope, Hagerstown. I, I, I think, I, I came here with a lot of hope, and I still have that hope. And it's just three months since I've started business. But I think the city needs to probably incentivize a little, a little to people like us because you would realize that doing business in Hagerstown, while your, your efforts are in bringing new business, but people like us are facing a lot of difficulties, you know, with the heavy taxes. I mean, mine is a very small, thin, wafer-thin margin kind of a business because if I go high in terms of my costs, you know, or my, 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 you know, the, you know, the charges I, I put for the food and things like that, I would not have people. You, you understand the demographics, the psychographics of Hagerstown. So I have invested with the hope that I would, I would be able to, you know, bring in more people at Hagerstown. And I've been speaking at all opportunities with all the business owners that, "Don't treat me as a threat." Or each one of us is not a threat because the more businesses come here, the more people will start walking into downtown. I, in fact, opened my business on weekdays till 10 o'clock in the night. After 8 o'clock, it is dead. But I still incur that expense because I want people to understand that, yes, downtown has a place or it's starting to have a place where, you know, you can walk with your families and come and enjoy food even at 10 o'clock in the night or 12 o'clock in the night on weekends. So just small requests. I really didn't know where to go, whom to talk to in terms of incentives that can be looked at for people like us because most of the people like I employ are either on parole or either they're, you know, all sorts of, all sorts of situations. Either they're, they're drug addicts who have just come out of their, you know, addiction and, you know, want to start a fresh life and things like that. That's, that's the kind of people that we find here more often than anything else. So my humble request, if, if something can be looked at, if something can be done for people like us, and that's all, probably that's all that I, I wanted to say. And thanks for your time. I'm sorry I didn't fill up those forms and.
No, it's okay. It's quite all right. That's why I opened it up to the floor.
All right, and I would take this opportunity to, while I have seen all the council members at my place and not seen you, so it's a request on a public platform that I would like to see you at my place. And if you want, I can send you a formal invitation for that.
No, I, yeah, well, I, I work seven hours a week, so it's hard for me to get down.
I appreciate that.
But, but I definitely plan on stopping by and seeing your place and grabbing something to eat. And Jill, could you reach out to him this week? Thank you.
And I have to say that there are certain councils which are operating here, like the Main Street, Hagerstown, Main Street Association. They've been very helpful. They've been very helpful. It's more of such institutions or associations that we need to come, where business people are coming on platform. are coming on platform and trying to work out issues and sort out issues. Mark, sitting here, has been very cooperative, and I just can't thank these people enough. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you so much.
Just for the record, sir. Just for the record, I had a great turkey sandwich from your place to business.
He's been most supportive, I have to say that. Thank you so much, sir. I appreciate it.
All right, last call, anybody else? City Ministers' comments, please.
Just a reminder that National Night Out is Tuesday, August 1st, from 5:30 to 8:30 at Fairgrounds Park. That's all I have.
Mr. O'Shaughnessy.
Just one item of requests that I brought up earlier, that we move the IBW contract to the front of the packet of items for approval this evening.
If that's a motion...
Yeah, we're going to move that, B right under, we'll do right under B for unfinished business.
Just a couple of things, just following up on some of the comments from here this evening. I think the mayor touched on some of it with Mr. Lawrence's questions as far as what's being done, and we're waiting to hear back from Nancy with Rodney as far as the trash collection. I think we're all eager to see what those possibilities may be. As far as what we're doing downtown, I mean, I think that speaks for itself when we're undertaking the largest revitalization project pretty much in our history with the Urban Improvement Project. So, I think we will see some fruits from that investment. The gentleman with Jerry's, thank you. Thank you very much for your investment here in downtown Hagerstown, it's greatly appreciated. I think you did bring up a good point with some of the downtown events. I've heard those concerns from other businesses that are outside of that area, so to speak, of basically the square down to, towards the library. I know, I think the issue with wind downs, because it's an event put on by the Mayoral Theater, which they're right there on that block, but I think it would be appropriate to look at other city events that we have to try to share in the wealth, so to speak, to help incorporate not only Jerry's, but some of the other businesses within our core. So, it's a good feedback and much appreciated. Thank you.
Emma.
I also just want to comment on the downtown, comments made about downtown. We hear it all the time, downtown is dying. I have a hard time buying into that concept, and I just want to list a few reasons why. Discovery Station, Bulls and Bears, 28 South, El Paso, Gourmet Goad, Public Square Cafe, Pizza Pretzel, Rhubarb House, Inaganda Delights, Hager Watches, Jerry Subs, Potomac Bee Company, Regenerate Float, Broadax, Maryland Theater, Schmichael Stube, The New Restaurant, Christopher's, The New Ale House. We have restaurants, we have businesses that are performing and performing well, but unfortunately, all we ever talk about is the businesses that aren't, or that moved out, or the vacant buildings. I think downtown isn't what we want it to be. We're trying to get it there, which is why the downtown improvement plan is happening. But I think it does those businesses a disservice when all we talk about is how downtown is failing, because I just listed that right up here in thirty seconds, thinking about a one-block radius around the square. They're not the only businesses down here by any means, but just right in this area, all those businesses are doing well and are busy and are, you know, I don't know, contributing to the success of Hagerstown. So, I think it does them a disservice when all we talk about is how bad downtown is failing. I think if we could change that idea, and if you're going to shop, shop local. If you're going to go out to eat, go to one of these privately-owned restaurants instead of going to Red Lobster, Olive Garden, or one of these chain restaurants. Come downtown and spend your money down here, and that's how we're going to get more foot traffic and draw more businesses.
Lou.
First, I'd like to commend everybody with regards to the retreat this afternoon, this morning and afternoon. I thought it was the best one that I've been associated with, and I look forward to positive things coming out of it. And I've lived here all my life, I'll be sixty-five this year. When I came back from law school in nineteen seventy-seven, we had a lot of retail downtown, which has obviously disappeared, just like disappearing everywhere, including the malls, because of Amazon and the Internet. But let me tell you what else we had in nineteen seventy-seven. We had the Gisha House downtown, very nice massage parlor, before law was enacted to say that the only massage parlors you could have are legitimate. We had two adult dirty bookstores downtown, one of them right on the square, the other one right next to the Alexander House. South Potomac Street was absolutely nothing but bars, and while the city may close down at eight o'clock at night now, it certainly didn't back then. Matter of fact, it came to life at five after two in the morning, and was about as active as any city could ever be, from about five after two in the morning until about three thirty, four AM. It was great. So, when people talk about downtown, and I've said this a lot, people have long-term memories. Yeah, they remember the fifties and sixties with Irelandes and when the professional arts building and Irelandes, you get in the elevator, and they had a man in the elevator smoking a cigarette, taking you up to wherever you needed to go, and it was a downtown hub. So, people remember the fifties and the sixties, but I swear they conveniently forget the seventies and the eighties, when downtown, while it had that, while we had Huffman's, and we had Bickles, and we had the legitimate bookstore, and we had good retail. I don't think that is going to come back to this city as far as that type of retail anymore than it is in any of our major cities. The best you see in the cities are the very nice boutique shops that you'll see in Shepherdstown and Frederick, with the whole different dynamic. But to act like this downtown has continually gone downhill without understanding how much has been achieved in the last two decades in our downtown is rather shortsighted. And to act like that the only thing this city did was stick in a cultural trail that by itself, and that's the solution, is also shortsighted. Paul said it. Very few people seem to recognize that this city is about to embark on a project of a There is nobody who's lived in this city for sixty years who has ever seen the city, the county, the state, the Board of Education, and private development entertain a thirty to forty million dollar investment in education and arts in our downtown. And that is what is happening. That will bring student housing, which is part of this project. That is why some things are happening down here. The plaza, pretty much unless you're involved in this whole project, I would say ninety-eight percent of the residents of our community have no idea what I'm even talking about when I mention the plaza that is part of this project, which may indeed be a new area for a lot of the public events that take place downtown. So, for those who think this community isn't doing anything about downtown and has not done anything about downtown, it just isn't true. And the best example anyone could ever give is just looking at South Potomac Street and the changes that have taken place, and the changes that are about to take place. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to be on the soapbox so long.
Don.
Well said, Lou. Yes, Mayor, I went to the Municipal Band Concert Sunday night. It was an extraordinary concert. Those people who play and attract crowds, and there was a reasonable crowd there Sunday night in spite of the weather. It was so enjoyable to everybody. It was just incredible. We were so fortunate to have a municipal band, a hundred and some-year-old municipal band, perform on Sunday nights. And the Municipal Band is having local, you know, Hagerstown Government Week next week, and the mayor and council are invited to be there next week as the guests of the band. And they are looking, several of the band members said to me that they're looking forward to next week's events. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Don. I too want to thank staff for your cooperation and input today at the retreat. Hopefully, in the next month, we can figure out another Saturday to have our second one and put some thoughts into action. So, I appreciate that very much. I'll be down. I will be. I will be. And again...
So, why? I look forward to having you.
I only work seventy hours a week. If I can find some time to get down there, I will make sure I do it.
I'm doing eating right now, so...
I understand, so you know, yep. But you came to my meeting, so now I got to come down to your restaurant. All right. We're going to move on to adopting the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on June 6th, June 13th, and June 20th, all of course in 2017.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, the approval and ordinance to amend the city code by adding Chapter Thirty-Seven Police and Fire Department binding interest arbitration.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council to approve an ordinance to amend the city code pursuant to charter amendment passed by voters in the general election on November 8th, 2016, to add Chapter Thirty-Seven Police and Fire Department binding interest arbitration to set forth the procedures for implementing binding interest arbitration when the city and a defined negotiating union have reached an impasse during contract negotiations.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries four to one. IBW local labor contract approval.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Three-O-Seven. This agreement shall run for a period of five years commencing on July 26th, 2017 through June 30th, 2022.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you, gentlemen. Sure, when we come, as soon as we're done, we'll get it on the way out. Approve of resolution memorandum of understanding for tactical emergency medical support to the Washington County Special Response Team.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move mayor and council approve a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding for tactical emergency medical support to Washington County Special Response Team. The member agencies intend to continue to assign tactical medics to the Washington County SRT in order to provide medical support if needed.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of resolution amendment of the purchase agreement for sale, forty-three to fifty-three West Washington Street.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move mayor and city council to approve resolution authorizing an addendum to the purchase agreement for sale property located at forty-three to fifty-three West Washington Street. City-owned property is currently under contract to be sold to Hager Five LLC. The addendum will extend the settlement date from July 31, 2017 to October 31, 2017.
Second. Okay. Give that one to Don. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of memorandum of understanding for safer access to school grants.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the approval of the MOU for the acceptance of a grant in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand for the installation of sidewalks along Haven Road and modifications to improve handicap accessibility to the nearby traffic signal of Pennsylvania Avenue and Fairview Road. The city's match is a hundred and eight thousand nine hundred dollars, taken from state aid funds, project to provide for fully accessible crosswalks and pedestrian signals for school students and the public in general.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Resolution execution of residential lease agreement, city of Hagerstown property located at thirty-eighth North Potomac Street, apartment number three, Hagerstown, Maryland.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve the attached resolution authorizing the execution of a residential lease agreement at the city of Hagerstown property located at thirty-eighth North Potomac Street in Hagerstown, Maryland. The lease will be between the city of Hagerstown and Anthony D. Jones, Jr., and shall be in effect from August 1, 2017 to July 31, 2018.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of resolution execution of residential lease agreement for the city of Hagerstown property located at thirty-eighth North Potomac Street, apartment number four, Hagerstown, Maryland.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the attached resolution authorizing the execution of a residential lease agreement at the city of Hagerstown property located at thirty-eighth North Potomac Street in Hagerstown, Maryland. The lease will be between the city of Hagerstown and Matthew Hast, and shall be in effect from August 1, 2017 to July 31, 2018.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Approve of resolution execution of lease agreement for a portion of the city of Hagerstown property known as Bureau Box located at sixty West Washington Street, Hagerstown, Maryland.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve the attached resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement for a portion of the city of Hagerstown property known as Bureau Box located at sixty West Washington Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. The lease will be between the city of Hagerstown and OAR Travel LLC and shall be in effect from August 1, 2017 to July 31, 2018.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of contract to furnish and install parking access and revenue control systems for both parking decks.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and council approve a contract to replace the parking access and revenue control system for both parking decks in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. Staff is authorized to spend up to two hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars to cover contingency items for this project. The contract will be awarded to Hub Parking Technology of Warren Dale, Pennsylvania.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Approval of grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to authorize acceptance of a Green Streets, Green Jobs, Green Towns grant in the amount of forty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars from the Chesapeake Bay Trust. This grant, along with matching funds from the city's capital improvement project budget, will be used to construct traffic calming and stormwater management facilities at two locations along Bellevue Avenue.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Approve of contract for alley reconstruction program phase two.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the approval of the contract with Concrete Central LLC of Hagerstown, Maryland, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-two thousand forty-five dollars for the reconstruction of nine public alleys. Funding for this project is general fund bonds.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Approve of liability property insurance for fiscal year 2018.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve the fiscal 2018 renewal of insurance coverage with the local government insurance trust for liability owner-owned property insurance in the amount of four hundred and six thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of a transfer of Fire Department air horns.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move mayor and council approval for the Hagerstown Fire Department to transfer two emergency warning air horns that were once attached to city buildings to the first Hagerstown Hose Company, Museum of Firefighting History, thirty-one South Potomac Street. The air horns would complement the game well fire system that the museum has on display. The horns were activated by an outside fire alarm box that connected to a telegraph system that transmitted through City Hall. The game well system was used until 2005.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is it. Thank you, everyone, and good night. See you next Tuesday at Burn Round Park for a National Night Out.